Members of the council, to please find your seats. I know that Alderman Vestal has indicated to me, I understand he also communicated to Ms. Whitby that due to a family illness, he won't be with us tonight. With that beginning, Ms. Whitby, would you please call a roll?
Gibson.
Present.
Yildin.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Berry.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Acorm is present.
Thank you very much. Can we stand for the prayer to be followed by the pledge? And let me ask us to bow our head, please. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for your grace. We thank you for sending your son to give us guidance and understanding as we live in this troubling world. We want to thank you for the direction and the hope and the freedom that you have given through this country to the people of Iraq. We want you to protect those of our soldiers, both men and women, who are serving overseas and at home in every capacity, giving them your guidance and protection and certainly giving comfort to the family members of those who have lost loved ones. Please help this country as it moves into the future in such a difficult world, and it's only through your will and grace that we'll be able to look forward to the future in a positive way. Through your son, as we asked in the beginning, in your name, through all of the grace that you've given us, let me now say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Gibson moves, and Alderman Witcher seconds approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Here.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
We got Communications to have a blanket motion.
Will we accept and file 1 through 12, please?
Second. Hold 11?
12.
No, 1 through 12, hold 11. Hold 11 and let's ask that, I'm asking that we act on that separately.
Okay.
So we're voting on 1 through 12 without including number 11.
Okay.
We're going to discuss 12 separate.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
11 and 12.
11 and 12, 4811 and 12.
Thank you.
4811 and 12, all right, all but 4811 and 12 on the motion, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Number four. Number four, do you want it by title?
That'll be fine.
This is a letter from Jack Finnegan, co-chairman of the Bering Cross Neighborhood Association, and it's regarding their meeting on March 17th and their opposition to curbside recycling.
Is there a motion?
We accept and file.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Let's do 12 and then we'll do 11.
Okay, by title or do you want it read?
Read it, please.
Yeah, read it.
This is a letter dated April 14th, 2003, members of the North Little Rock City Council regarding recent annexation by Mammell City Council. Dear members of the city council, after visiting with Mayor Hayes, my office has begun the process of preparing and filing a lawsuit as a result of the city of Mammell recently annexing land located within North Little Rock's city limits. State law requires that any lawsuit challenging such an annexation must be filed within 20 days. Although my conversations with the Mammell city attorney, Jananne Davis, give me hope an out-of-court solution is possible, I feel that we must take quick action to protect our rights. If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know. Sincerely, Paul Seskey, city attorney.
Do we accept and file?
Accept and file and authorize the city attorney to proceed.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess, I guess they're not happy that we sold them that land out there, aren't they?
No, I don't guess they are. With that, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Let's do 12 and then we'll do 11.
Okay, by title or do you want it read?
Read it, please.
Yeah, read it.
This is a letter dated April 14th, 2003, members of the North Little Rock City Council regarding recent annexation by Mammell City Council. Dear members of the city council, after visiting with Mayor Hayes, my office has begun the process of preparing and filing a lawsuit as a result of the city of Mammell recently annexing land located within North Little Rock's city limits. State law requires that any lawsuit challenging such an annexation must be filed within 20 days. Although my conversations with the Mammell city attorney, Jananne Davis, give me hope an out-of-court solution is possible, I feel that we must take quick action to protect our rights. If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know. Sincerely, Paul Seskey, city attorney.
Do we accept and file?
Accept and file and authorize the city attorney to proceed.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I guess, I guess they're not happy that we sold them that land out there, aren't they?
No, I don't guess they are. With that, on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
I would almost feel we'd be willing to buy it back at the same price we sold it.
We're very much so.
Mayor, I'm sorry, may I ask you a question about Communications number five?
Sure.
T-21 reauthorization.
Sure.
On that for priority one, it's McCain and Fairfax, what increment would that 5.976 be?
Just a second, let me, let me find it.
Okay.
Number five.
From Mr. McKenzie.
Right.
To Senator Lincoln. Would that be engineering and?
Yeah, what this is, 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 this is, let me make sure, this is, these were, these were items that were in the rail grade separation issue, or rail grade separation. This is listed in no, as I understand it, having talked to Mr. McKenzie, this is listed in no order of prioritization, it's just simply a listing. So, you know, in order, I don't think there was much feeling that these would, unless the heavens parted and the clouds brought forth manna, that, that any of these would really have a chance, much a chance of being funded. I wanted to make sure it was included in.
Okay.
Mayor, let's go back a little history. When we dropped the 14th Street Bridge, we asked Metroplan to switch that money. You know, we got that money because another project didn't happen. We asked them to switch it to a future bridge that would have been off of either Richards or, and Rosemary, we'd connect Rosemary on Highway 161, and I believe Richards over on McCain, with an, with an overpass that would utilize the ABF road that we built.
Your memory may be better than mine, Alderman. I remember we wanted to do that, but in the, in the form of the way Metroplan's hierarchy goes, you either do it or you don't. And so when we chose not to, you know, we got out of line.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but I, but I think that's what we agreed, the project we would like to have back in line with. Because we got the bridge, the proposal for this five-lane or wide four-lane right through the middle of 14th Street, and the neighbors didn't want it, and we chose not to do it.
Right, right, but I'm, I'm afraid you can't, when you back off one.
But we go back into the hopper, though.
Any other questions? All right, let's, if you would read 11 in its entirety.
In its entirety?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Who it's addressed to?
This is a letter dated March 19th, 2003, it's addressed to Robert L. Sisson. It's, dear Robert, we are pleased to inform you that you have been selected as the winner of the 2003 Arkansas Society of Certified Public Accountants Outstanding CPA and Government Award. You will be formally recognized at the ASCPA Annual Convention Awards Banquet to be held during the September 3 through 6, 2003 Annual Convention in Tunica, Mississippi. Also, as the state winner of this award, you will be a nominee in consideration for the 2003 AICPA Outstanding CPA and Government Award. Please send two photographs of yourself to the society office to be used for press releases and an article in the ASCPA newsletter. We will need to receive the photographs by March 28th. Again, congratulations on being selected to receive this prestigious award. Sincerely, Robin Harris, Public Relations Coordinator.
We, we wanted a surprise, or at least I did, and, and although Bob didn't know that they were here, Connie and Robin are in, did you see them back there? Looked around a while ago and saw them back there. You know, we, we had a chance to conspire a little bit and, and, and share our pride in, in Bob with, with some others, and, and as we all know, he added up proudly for us, and, and as you can see, was selected as an outstanding CPA and be recognized in Tunica, and Bob has told us that he promises that we won't take any city funds over there except his paycheck or anything anybody wants to have him carry privately, but other than that, we know that, you know, that irrespective of the recognition, Bob Sisson is, is a critical part of this city and its, its ability to pay its bills when they become due, has been doing it for a long time, and I think all of us on the council, you know, to a person, are very appreciative of, of not only this recognition, but certainly the day-in and day-out characteristics that, that reflect what the Arkansas Society of Certified Public Accountants now knows that we have for a long time. So I think, you know, with a motion to accept and file along with a hearty congratulations from all the council, and I'll accept that motion at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Thomas, seconded by Alderman Berry, and, and everybody can vote with a loud round of applause, so Bob. Now, you know, if, if the microphone's open, if you care to say anything, and we're gonna let Connie or Robin make a comment or two, you know, we, you know, for about four, three or four months, we were, we were worried about anybody being able to recognize you, and now we're, we with the help of the good Lord are certainly appreciative of, of your recovery and back in, in office.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank Arkansas Society of CPAs. Y'all know I don't particularly like this microphone, but I appreciate working for the city of North Little Rock, and it's been an honor, and of course, I didn't see Robin and Connie until I stood up there and looked, but then I wondered what they're, but Robin's been, this city's been her life.
Well, yes, has Robin, you and Connie come on up?
You know, the city's been Robin's life almost all her life. I've been here 23 years, and she gets a little bit older than that, but I appreciate all y'all, appreciate Connie and Robin's work with.
Well, we wanted, we wanted to thank you and certainly Robin and Connie, I know that, you know, that during your illness, we, we all had, I won't say a lot of fun, but we went through some challenges in dealing with the accommodations at, at our, at our favorite hospital, I can say that, Baptist North, and, and we made, we made the time up there as tolerable as possible, and we certainly appreciate the care they gave you, and we're glad that that is, is almost in our history book. Connie, would you want to add a little bit?
No, just thanks for all the support that y'all did give us during this time, we really do appreciate it.
Well, y'all are family, and, and we look forward to, you know, keeping, keeping that going long. By the way, you know, I also have a granddaughter that we've added to the family. If anybody'd like to see pictures, I'll show them out there. I've got that in for the council meeting, let's once again, thanks Bob Sisson.
Don't let him.
And if any council member wants to make any comments, microphone's open.
Well, I certainly want to echo that, and I just want to tell her not to let him go down to Tunica by himself, CJ. Bob, I'll go with you, I'll go with you to keep you out of trouble. Mayor, number 10, I did not see earlier, I apologize, I would like to have it read if we could.
I'd also like to have nine read.
At least thanks, showing off.
Let's, let's just start with nine.
Okay, number nine, in its entirety?
Yes.
This is a letter dated April 8th, 2003, from Patsy and Otis Pack, it's addressed to Chief Charles Dixon, North Little Rock Fire Department, regarding the Ron Pack Carpet Center fire, April 6th, 2003, the Otis Pack Building Material Store. Dear Chief Dixon, my husband Otis Pack and I want to express our appreciation to you and all the firemen that fought the fire blaze at Ron Pack Carpet Center and for saving Otis Pack Building Material Store from the fire Sunday, April 6th, 2003. We saw firsthand the hard work, dedication, devotion, and expertise that each and every fireman did with their job, and we certainly do appreciate the North Little Rock Fire Department, and that sincerely, Patsy and Otis Pack.
Motion? All right, it's already done, excuse me, all right, let's go to 10. And I appreciate you bringing this up, because I had meant to flag this, and I forgot it was there, too.
There's, I need to have a little understanding of the dates, mainly.
Um.
10, please.
Number 10 is April 3rd, 2003, it's addressed to Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, it's from Joe Smith, Director of Commerce and Government Affairs. Dear Mayor, due to a renewed interest by several developers in the city-owned 11 acres just west of the Broadway Bridge, I would like to issue a request for proposal from interested parties in the development of this property. I would like to open the proposal period on April 18th, 2003, and have a council-agreed closing date of May 16th, 2003. Acceptance by you and the city council of this communication will ensure the interested developers that these dates are set by and honored by you. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Joe A. Smith.
Mayor, my concern, it's really not long enough, I mean, we have a, we have a city council meeting on the 12th, that gives somebody three weeks to be able to get proposals in, Joe and that group go through them, I'm assuming, and then because of 12th, because obviously this city council's not going to pre-sign off on anything, I would say that the earliest the city council should probably look at it would be June, would be May the 27th.
Right.
And then, and then that, I'm not sure that's would be the closing date, because you, you can't close on 11 acres in.
No, no, what I think he meant, not close on the sale of the property, what I think was, in fact, and, Mr. Smith, you come up with a microphone, is that that would be the last date of submissions.
Of submission of the proposals.
Of the proposals, obviously, we're not going to, you know.
Fine enough, but I'd like to move it another, 16th is on a.
That's 30 days is what we, is what norm, is normal, if you want longer, Alderman, that's fine.
I think they probably need a little bit longer. You've got, I, I know that you've got, I've had some people that's called about it, and you've had some people's called about it, but 30 days for them to get a full-blown proposal of what they want to do may be a little tight.
We're open to anything, the, the main reason that I wanted to ask the mayor to, to put this letter in front of you was to have a closing date that was accepted by you, the council, so that these developers get a little bit nervous in laying their, all their cards on the table, and then the council going, well, let's accept some more. So I wanted to be, have it a council-approved closing date.
Our proposals.
So we could treat these developers with a professional.
Closing date, our proposals.
Of the proposal, not to close on the sale of the property, by the way.
Right.
In this council, we need to approve, you know, the proposal and whatever conditions we might decide to set on that in terms of accepting.
I'd like to just put in there to have a council-agreed closing date for proposals of May 27th, that means we get them in that day of our, or you can have it on a Friday before that even.
Okay, so you're looking at six weeks?
Yeah, six weeks total, let's just make.
Why don't you do it on the Friday before, so we duplicate it and.
Okay, they, they made the 23rd.
Duplicate it and have.
It just adds one week to it, because obviously, it, it isn't the cost of the property, it's the overall project that is going to be of more interest than anything. I think you've got a, you've got a, a appraisal for the present property.
That's correct. It's old.
Unless there's an objection, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll amend that to the 23rd, May 16th to 23rd, is that correct?
And then, agreed closing date for proposals, so there won't be any.
Right.
Thought that we're going to try to get.
No, you're absolutely correct, no, it'd take approval of this council to sell it, so, I mean, that's confusing, it was never intended to be that, it was simply intended to, to end the receipt of proposals.
Okay.
So that'll be, that'll be clearly understood in our submission, and, and let me mention this, I don't want, want any confusion to go on out there, and Paul, you can, you can add to that, there is still a cloud on this property. We, we won in the lower court with regard to Mr. David Carl, who this council, whatever company, I don't know, has he got a company or?
Development and Construction Management.
Development and Construction Management. We won at the trial level, he has filed a notice of appeal, there have been, through Mr. Smith, an interest of some that they, notwithstanding this, this potential cloud, are interested in going forward, is that what you're telling me?
That's correct.
So, you know, we feel very comfortable in our legal position, Paul's, you know, Paul and, and hired counsel because he had a conflict, he was witnessed out of, of being able to represent us all the way through. You know, we're trying to, to see about acquiring a bond that would protect us of any potential losses if, if this appeal is unsuccessful, and we believe it will be, but obviously, we're not going to be able to move this property forward, at least without this cloud, and so Mr. Seskey's going to try to ask the court that Mr. Carl have some bond that would help us shoulder any losses due to the lack of ability of us to sell this, if that did actually become a problem. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that, that we, we want to move forward, even with that pending, it may be resolved shortly, if you've gotten any, we're waiting on a, we filed a motion, waiting on a hearing right now, Mr. Gibson.
I guess then that I would probably want to further amend it if the, by, if the city attorney is not comfortable with us opening these proposals on May 23rd, that he can request that it be held over.
Well, I think the city attorney's very supportive of us going forward at this point.
Yes, actually, this was part of my advice to Mr. Smith, that I think let's go ahead and open it, and obviously, it'd make parties aware that there's an appeal going on, so, but I think we'd do this, but any negotiations, they'd have to fully understand that there is a cloud on the title that we believe will be lifted soon. Since we've got a motion for an amendment on that, I guess we need to vote on that, and then accept and file it.
That's, that's fine, it's, it's already been accepted and filed, so what, what I'll do is, is, is acknowledge that there's no, unless there, since there's no objection, by consensus, that May 16th date will be changed to.
May the 23rd.
May the 23rd, and, and reflect that the council has already accepted and filed it. Tell you what, just get a motion, why don't you just move, Martin?
I move accept and file it with the amendments that I gave you.
Yes, refile it, all right, is there a second to that?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, let's see, now we're a public hearing.
Can we do the special call, or you want to get?
Well, let's go ahead and do the special call. Why don't you propose a special call, Ms. Whitby?
Special call is dated April 11th, 2003, honorable members of the city council. Dear members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, April 14, 2003, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission, and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. This is signed by all eight council members.
All right, would you please read the legislation?
Yes, sir, this is a resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission.
Poof for adoption? Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, let's see, now we're a public hearing.
Can we do the special call, or you want to get?
Well, let's go ahead and do the special call. Why don't you propose a special call, Ms. Whitby?
Special call is dated April 11th, 2003, honorable members of the city council. Dear members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, April 14, 2003, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission, and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. This is signed by all eight council members.
All right, would you please read the legislation?
Yes, sir, this is a resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission.
Poof for adoption? Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, let's see, now we're a public hearing.
Can we do the special call, or you want to get?
Well, let's go ahead and do the special call. Why don't you propose a special call, Ms. Whitby?
Special call is dated April 11th, 2003, honorable members of the city council. Dear members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, April 14, 2003, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission, and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. This is signed by all eight council members.
All right, would you please read the legislation?
Yes, sir, this is a resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission.
Poof for adoption? Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Congratulations. Won't you ever find?
Speech.
Excuse me?
All right, we'll do his, let me just mention to the council, we've had this position vacant for, since the first of the year, and, and I have, I considered several folks for that appointment, because of one reason or another, they weren't able to do that. We have a very important board meeting of Central Arkansas Transit coming up, and I wanted to make sure that our full contingency was represented. Mr. Smith has kindly agreed to do this, pending us making a change, there are several other cities, the city manager is on from Little Rock, along with Judge Valines's, a staffer in Judge Valines's office, so there's, this fairly, you know, fairly common, but I want to also mention that Mr. Smith, I think will be very willing when we perhaps find a replacement to, to make a change, and, and that's a lot of the reason that I wanted to go ahead and make sure we had a full contingency for this vote on a re, or a postponed CADA meeting, which I understand will be Thursday. With that, I guess we can go to Mr. Grace's item, what is that?
He has a presentation.
All right, Mr. Grace.
Mayor, we do have something we want to share with you and the council members and the public, we're very excited about it, but the more I thought about what I was going to say, I decided I better let the one who did all the work on it talk about it, so she's much more familiar.
Are you going to introduce her to us?
This is Marilyn Hall, animal shelter, excuse me, sir.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I just want to take a few minutes to tell you about a very important event that's
Mr. David Carl, who this council, whatever company, I don't know, has he got a company?
Development and Construction Management.
Development and Construction Management. We won at the trial level. He has filed a notice of appeal. There have been, through Mr. Smith, an interest of some that they, notwithstanding this potential cloud, are interested in going forward. Is that what you're telling me?
That's correct.
So, you know, we feel very comfortable in our legal position. Paul hired counsel because he had a conflict. He was witnessed out of being able to represent us all the way through. You know, we're trying to see about acquiring a bond that would protect us of any potential losses if this appeal is unsuccessful, and we believe it will be. But obviously, we're not going to be able to move this property forward, at least without this cloud. And so, Mr. Sussky is going to try to ask the court that Mr. Carl have some bond that would help us shoulder any losses due to the lack of ability of us to sell this, if that did actually become a problem. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that we want to move forward, even with that pending. It may be resolved shortly. Have you gotten any? We're waiting on a, we filed a motion, waiting on a hearing right now, Mr. Gibson.
I guess then that I would probably want to further amend it if the by, if the city attorney is not comfortable with us opening these proposals on May 23rd, that he can request that it be held over.
Well, I think the city attorney is very supportive of us going forward at this point.
Yes, actually, this was part of my advice to Mr. Smith, that I think let's go ahead and open it, and obviously, it'd make parties aware that there's an appeal going on. So, but I think we'd do this, but any negotiations, they'd have to fully understand that there is a cloud on the title that we believe will be lifted soon.
Since we've got a motion for an amendment on that, I guess we need to vote on that, and then accept and file it.
That's fine. It's already been accepted and filed, so what I'll do is acknowledge that there's no, unless there, since there's no objection, by consensus, that May 16th, it'll be changed to?
May the 23rd.
May the 23rd, and reflect that the council has already accepted and filed it. Tell you what, just get a motion. Why don't you just move, Martin?
I move accept and file it with the amendments that I gave you.
Just refile it. All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's see, now we're a public hearing.
Can we do the special call, or you want to get?
Well, let's go ahead and do the special call. Why don't you propose a special call, Ms. Whitby?
The special call is dated April 11th, 2003. Honorable members of the city council, dear members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM, April 14, 2003, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. A resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission, and for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, respectfully submitted by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. This is signed by all eight council members.
All right, would you please read the legislation?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution appointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Central Arkansas Transit Commission.
Proof for adoption?
Second.
Motion made, seconded and discussion. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Congratulations. Won't you ever find?
Speech? Excuse me? All right, we'll do his. Let me just mention to the council, we've had this position vacant for, since the first of the year, and I considered several folks for that appointment. Because of one reason or another, they weren't able to do that. We have a very important board meeting of Central Arkansas Transit coming up, and I wanted to make sure that our full contingency was represented. Mr. Smith has kindly agreed to do this, pending us making a change. There are several other cities, the city manager is on from Little Rock, along with Judge Valines's staffers in Judge Valines's office, so there's, this is fairly, you know, fairly common. But I want to also mention that Mr. Smith, I think, will be very willing when we perhaps find a replacement to make a change. And that's a lot of the reason that I wanted to go ahead and make sure we had a full contingency for this vote on a re, or a postponed CADA meeting, which I understand will be Thursday. With that, I guess we can go to Mr. Grace's item. What is that?
He has a presentation.
All right, Mr. Grace?
Mayor, we do have something we want to share with you and the council members and the public. We're very excited about it, but the more I thought about what I was going to say, I decided I better let the one who did all the work on it talk about it, so she'd much more.
Are you want to introduce her to us?
This is Marilyn Hall, animal shelter. Excuse me, sir.
Thank you, Marilyn.
I just want to take a few minutes to tell you about a very important event that's happening this Wednesday, April 16th. North Shore Animal Rescue League from New York, for the last three years, two years, has been traveling around the country with their 35-foot adoption trailers. They have three of them. They've covered more than 16,000 miles, stopping in different cities along the way, joining with animal rescue groups to promote the adoption of shelter animals. And I want to show you the itinerary of one of the mobile units for the first half of this year. And if you'll notice, they started in San Francisco, they went to Sacramento, Oakland, Denver, Albuquerque's on there, a lot of, a lot of big cities, but look what I've circled. North Little Rock Animal Control, Arkansas. We're the only stop in Arkansas. And someone asked me why they were coming to North Little Rock, and I said, well, probably because we're the best, best animal control in the state. But I didn't know how they would know that in New York. So I called them, and they said they've heard about our adoption program, and they realize that we've worked really hard to find homes for our shelter animals. In fact, this year, 100% of the adoptable animals that have come through the shelter have found homes. Isn't that great? This event Wednesday is recognition of the work that North Little Rock is doing in animal control. We've asked CARE and Helping Hands to join us. Those are two other Central Arkansas rescue groups. We'll be at the PetSmart in North Little Rock on Wednesday, from 11 to 4:00. And we're just hoping that all of you will come out and see us. We're going to have beautiful animals for adoption, but even if you don't think you need an animal, come see us. We have goodie bags to present to everyone who has an animal at home, whether you adopt or not. We're, you'll be able to see the North Shore trailer, but also, if you haven't seen North Little Rock's new mobile unit, you'll get a chance to see it that day, and we're really proud of it. It's, it's great. It's air-conditioned and heated, and you can just walk through there and see the animals, no more getting the animals off and on. So I'm just hoping that everyone will come and show your support for North Little Rock Animal Control, and just be there on Wednesday. And I think, Billy, no, you go ahead, Billy, because you've got some things to say.
My understanding is former Mayor Casey Laman is going to be there. Representative Stephen Bright is going to be there. Channel 7 has made a commitment. Who was they going to wear that dog suit?
No, Channel 4.
I'm sorry, Channel 4. Where's Jimmy? Jimmy's going to be there in a dog suit, so if, we'd just like to, like to show North Shore that they didn't make a mistake coming here. They're a world-famous organization, and we'd appreciate any of y'all can come out.
Let's do it again. Now, where and when?
PetSmart, from 11 to 4:00. PetSmart on Lenders Road, right in North Little Rock, from 11 to 4:00 next Wednesday. And Mayor, we'd love to have you there, and say a few words if you can, and all of you invited.
We are, we are proud of our animal shelter, and we're glad the word is reaching out to the Big Apple, friends of the animals, you know, Billy Grace, his staff. We're, we're just exceptional, exceptionally pleased, and all that, you know, you're a part of our family out there. It's something that, that we've worked at for a long time, and we're very proud that others are, are following our, the examples that are being set by our animal control. It's a special, warm feeling that I have, that, that we have been able to make the kinds of strides that you just spoke about, and, and really, I think, a goal that we hope others strive for, because adopting all the adoptable animals is, is something I really never believed was achievable, and, and we just want to keep that, keep that record going. So, thank you, and, and thanks, Billy, and thanks to all of you who helped, helped take care of North Little Rock's unwanted.
Thank you. Everybody come out if you can.
And make them wanted.
We couldn't do it without the support of the city government, though. We thank you also.
Not at all. Appreciate it. I know there were a couple of letters that were read. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing on curbside recycling. Anyone wants to make any comments on our curbside recycling? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and microphone jurors.
I'm DeWen Hearn, and I live in Park Hill. I teach biology and environmental health. I have a master's degree in molecular biology. I'm a board member, former conservation chair of Audubon Society of Central Arkansas. I'm the current conservation chair of Arkansas Audubon Society, and I drive a gas-electric hybrid car. Now, it should be pretty obvious at this point which side of this issue I'm really going to come down on. I'm willing to pay for curbside recycling. I'm going to recycle, no matter what, even if it's inconvenient, like it is now, even if it's difficult to get recycling information, like it is now. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about my experience with recycling in North Little Rock. I moved here a little bit over a year ago. When I moved here, I got a packet of information from the city and the Chamber of Commerce. It's about that thick. I have it with me tonight. Recycling's not mentioned anywhere in there. There's one line on the webpage that says there's recycling drop-off points and tells where they are. I had to take the initiative, make the phone call, go try to find the drop-off center, stop at a nearby business, get them to tell me where it was, because it was around back on an unpaved area that has potholes with ankle-deep water if it's been raining. Making it convenient and providing minimal education, like an insert in the water bill, should tremendously increase the participation in recycling in North Little Rock. We're not talking about additional garbage, we're talking about minimal effort in just sorting when you take it out to the curb. Most of us have seen the statistics. We know that recycling is the right thing to do for the environment. We've seen the numbers showing the energy savings. I think it's the right thing to do for the city. It saves money now and reduces landfill fees. It saves money in the long run by delaying the time when we'll have to develop a new landfill. And for me personally, it also serves some other needs. It's the right thing for me to do spiritually, because, see, I believe God expects me to be a good steward of what he's given me, including the place where I live. And so, the question comes down to, it appears to me, how to offset the costs, and that's what I'd like to address. Currently, a truck comes by my house two times a week. Once for weekly trash pickup, and the second time for yard waste, as I understand, and items that are too large to fit in the trash truck, household items. I would suggest reassessing the cost-effectiveness of that weekly pickup of the yard waste and large household items. I've lived in a number of communities, and none of them had yard waste and large household items picked up with that frequency. Usually, it was as requested, or once a quarter, or twice a year. In fact, in the Conway website, it even puts in a little education there and says, by the way, it's better for your yard if you mulch the grass clippings instead of bagging them up and sending them off. How many of us had large household items or branches to dispose of last week, or the week before, or this month? Virtually none of us. In my neighborhood, the primary beneficiaries of this service are rental management companies who put out construction materials, not residential customers. So let's take a second look at this and see if it really benefits residential customers more to have large item pickups, which we rarely use, or recycling pickup, which every resident in the city can participate in each week. Reduced landfill fees should then be able to help offset the cost of the less frequent yard waste and large household waste pickup. Now, if that wouldn't cover the cost, I'm sure that several of you are already considering what you're going to do with the increased tax revenues that are going to come in from the Walmart Supercenter that's going in, and I'd suggest that curbside recycling would be an excellent consideration for that. In summary, I'm for curbside recycling. I'm willing to pay for it, and I think that we should reassess the frequency of some of our current services.
Thank you very much. We're going to have one more public hearing the next council meeting, so everyone's welcome to come back or to come. So we'll have one more public hearing for the council acts at the next council meeting. Yes, sir?
Mayor Hayes and the council, I'm John DeGruda. I'm a chairman of scenic hill area up there. This recycling bit you're talking about, I've talked to a number of the residents up there, and also myself. We don't have any use for any recycling up there. What little items that people up there recycle, they take down and they put in the dumpsters down there at Pike Lanes. But all of them is against having one of these big green containers sitting out again in the curb in front of every house up there. Primarily, a lot of them up there is like me, they're all a can or something, and they're not able to go out there and drag that can back and forth in that yard once a week, or twice a week, or whatever they're going to pick it up. And there's not that much recycling up there anyway. Those big containers down there, whenever they come around and dump them, every two weeks, or once a month, or whenever, they're not full, there's not too much in them. And all my constituents up there said they are strictly against this recycling bit. And as far as, she was talking about the curbs and limbs, my wife will tell you, she's been busy the last two weeks of cleaning out all her flower beds, and trimming the trees, and piling all that brush out in front. She appreciates the pickup that we get on it. We're well satisfied with everything the way it is, and let's don't change it. Thank you.
Microphones open. Thank you very much.
I'm Jack Singleton, and I live in Park Hill. I want to urge the council to adopt the curbside pickup that's being considered. I want to tell you that the monthly cost of $1.75 is probably the cheapest investment that I would ever make. I'm now picking up my mother's recyclables and a couple of my neighbors and taking them to one of the drop-off points, and I suspect I'm spending a lot more than that in gasoline. North Little Rock is one of the only communities in Pulaski County that doesn't offer this service, and I would really like to see us join our neighbors in doing a better job of encouraging recycling. The data shows that people recycle when you make it convenient, and curbside pickup of recyclables will increase the number of people who will see the benefits and advantages to recycling. I've got a couple of seniors that live in my neighborhood, and one gentleman told me that he remembered back during World War II, when he used to cut the tops off the top of the cans, and the bottoms off, and stick those two lids inside and flatten it out, and put it on his back porch. He said, you know, I'd like to be able to do that today, but I just don't get around that well. Making it convenient for my neighbor would mean that he would begin to recycle, recycle again. Curbside recycling in North Little Rock would also reduce the tip charges, as we would make fewer trips to the landfill, and it would extend, I think, maybe even give, take some pressure off of our sanitation staff, as our crews would be able to spend more time in collecting and less time making frequent trips to drop off a load at the landfill. Our leaf and limb shredding and composting program is something that people talk about all over the state of Arkansas, and I think it's time to add to that these other items that can be reused. I'm one who believes that recycling is the height of patriotism. My son-in-law is right now somewhere serving in the Persian Gulf, and when I drive around North Little Rock and see the large numbers of flags flying, I know they're supporting our troops. The flag is a sign of support for the men and women who are risking a great deal, so that we can continue as a country to be a beacon in this world. But with this freedom comes responsibility. Those who tell you they're unwilling to invest $1.75 a month for the chance to recycle are speaking from the basis of self-interest. I'm glad they're not the ones being called on to make substantial sacrifices to protect and defend this country. Our troops are being called on to give them themselves as Americans, and to celebrate, we celebrate their actions as patriotic. When folks give to make the whole better and stronger, we say thank you, and we celebrate their actions. Giving us the chance to protect our natural resources is one of the highest forms of patriotism. And I would argue it is un-American to fail to do what is right with our national resources that we know are limited and non-renewable. One aluminum can, when recycled, provides enough electricity to light a 60-watt bulb for almost a full day. Multiply that times millions, and you begin to see that it will provide tremendous energy savings for our country, as we recycle materials that are easily recyclable. It takes pennies on the dollar to get that aluminum can back in service. If we had to remove that same aluminum from bauxite ore, it would take a tremendous amount more of electricity. And the same cost savings can be found in most other recyclable items. I believe it's our responsibility to care for this country and this world, not as those who waste, without any thought for those who will come after us. And that's why I believe the adoption of this ordinance is as patriotic an act as flying the flag. It says to our community, we're concerned to live as those who care about how long our landfills will last. It says we care how we reuse resources that we know are finite. It says we're thinking ahead, and hopefully, avoiding our grandchildren paying as much for landfill and trash hauling services as we pay for electricity. It says we are wanting to live on this planet as caretakers, not those who think only about themselves and who think only about today. I believe this is the right ordinance, and I believe the action is overdue. I congratulate the city of North Little Rock for considering this proposal. I hope you'll pass it. And if you do, I promise you, I will work to see that you'll be proud of the recycling effort that we'll be able to bring to pass. Just give us the chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Erica Nielsen.
Erica, yeah, there you go.
My name is Erica Nielsen, and as your ballot witness, I'm a horrible public speaker, but I thought it was important that I came down and let you know that I am in support of curbside recycling. My husband and I moved here two years ago from New York State. We thought it was very ironic that we moved to the natural state, and there was no recycling program. For those of you who do know about New York State, not only is it promoted curbside, curbside recycling, but it's enforced by the law because they waited too long. So I do implore you to make a positive change. Change happens whether we want it to or not, and I think that it's long overdue, definitely. I'm more than happy to pay a little more for this change to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and your speaking was just fine.
I'm Joe Reynolds, and I have an opinion about the recycling situation, like everybody else does, I guess. I don't have any problem with recycling, but if I remember right, I haven't been in the city that long, but I believe we have millages and tax increases that took care of pickups and all that, and I don't have any problem with recycling, but I have a problem with paying for it. I thought we already had that part of picking up debris, garbage, whatever you want to call it. I thought we included all that into the, into the situation before, and I maintain that I don't have any problem picking it up, but I just have a problem with paying additional money for it. Thank you.
Microphone's open.
I just, I just had a question. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. I'm, like Mr. Reynolds, I'm not totally against recycling, but there's only two of us in our house, and the only thing we have that'd be recycled would be probably a couple of gallon jugs, I mean, a quart jug of milk. And of course, all of my cans, y'all know I own my own business, and all aluminum is gathered up and is carried to Metro Scrapout on 70 Highway. And my question is, if you don't have any recycling, are you still going to have to pay that $1.75, and you're still going to have that can to, to be taken care of, drag it out and drag it back, or take care of it if you don't have any recycling?
Answer is, I understand the contract is yes.
You still have to pay it, whether you use it or not?
Correct.
I had just a question, too. It was mentioned to me today that it might be good if we, at the next council meeting, have that container that we'll have to use here that the people could see.
Correct.
If we have that.
I'm sure we can.
I got the same, I got the same discussion.
And then, the other question, what happens, the ones who do not recycle, do you, do you still pick up the garbage?
Sure. There won't be any change. The way I understand the contract, Mr. Sussky, if my misunderstanding is correct, we'll have Mr. Head of our recycling, John Roberts, here next time in case there's any questions. So, you know, this is subject to change. I don't think so, but that, you know, the, the, the basic sanitation that we have now will not change. There will be a container that we'll have here next time, that will be distributed to all those that are on our sanitation routes, and that whatever recyclables we have, we'll put in one container, and we'll take it out to the curb, and there'll be one pickup per week. Now, that's the way I understand it will operate.
Mayor, I was wondering, this container, do they have, is there one available that would have, possibly have wheels on it that would make it?
I'm sure this does.
I don't know. It's a 30, it's only a 30-gallon container.
The one that I've seen doesn't have wheels.
Do you know some answers to this question? Yes, sir, I do.
Not the 85-gallon Conway user.
No, it's just, my name's David Steinmetz. I'm a resident of North Little Rock, also work with waste management. It's, it's a car, a container, it's about three feet by a foot and a half, and it does not have wheels.
Is there one with wheels available?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of. There is not. And it's, it's just placed, you know, those that want to participate is placed at the curb, and then our guys would come by, pick it up, and, and sort the tin, and aluminum, and paper, and glass.
I know, I know people that now, that have a hard time with getting their garbage cans out on, they can buy containers that have wheels on them, makes it easier for them to roll them out to the street, and this container for the recycling is the one that's going to be lifted up, right?
Yes.
And carried to the street.
In the, in the county where we, we service for garbage pickup, they have the big 96-gallon cars, like they have in the city of Little Rock, for elderly or handicapped, we are able to go up to the doors and pick that up. And we'd have checked the wording in the contract, it was set forth by the solid waste district to find out how that would work, but I would assume it would be the same as, as within the county, where you'd go to the door and pick that up.
Since we had a sort of a triple public hearing process, you know, we appreciate you coming up. Mr. Roberts is not here, but I'll definitely make sure he or somebody from the district is, is here next time to answer any specific questions, so.
We'll get you a car for next week as well.
Absolutely. Ms. Roberts?
I guess my question, the calls that I have been getting is that there are people that want to participate, but there are also people that do not want to participate. And one of the things that they ask me to ask us to consider is to want to not want to participate is to not charge them $1.75, because many of them are already taking their cans and making that money themselves. And a lot of them are asking us to not charge them $1.75.
I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to believe that that will not be an option, because of the cost of coming by the house.
There's, there's a tremendous amount of capital involved in gearing up to service the entire community, and it's based on the house.
Total volume, total number of houses. That's why that, for $1.75, you know, there's, there's absolutely no way that, that that would sustain the company to do that if, if it wasn't mandatory for everyone to, it's either all or nothing.
So they will come by whether people recycle or not?
That's correct.
On that street. On that street.
That's correct.
And he's going to collect?
In order for us to get that dollar seventy-five?
Excuse me, wait, wait, wait. Alderman Thomas and then Alderman Height.
And he's going to collect the dollar seventy-five whether he picks anything up and there'll be a lot of people that'll not participate, so he gives one seventy-five anyway.
Yeah, well, that, it was, what, twenty-one thousand households roughly that in the city of Little Rock, roughly, and in order for us to get the dollar seventy-five, all had to participate.
Correct.
I have one other question. The frequency is going to be weekly, is that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you going to, would you schedule it on days that our garbage trucks and our trash trucks are not in a specific neighborhood or is that, is that an issue?
It can be scheduled either way. It just, it should be routed just like the trash trucks are. You know, one, on a certain day every week, we go to, you know, each neighborhood.
So if Friday is when they pick up the garbage in my, on my streets, then that's the same day you take your?
They, they put the, they put their recycle bin out there at the same day.
Thank you.
I have one little question. You don't have, Little Rock is not completely in the recycling program, is that what you're saying?
Sorry?
Little Rock, the, the entire city is not?
The entire city of Little Rock is, yes.
All the city, all the only parts of it?
No, sir, the whole city is.
We appreciate it. Sure.
Gentlemen, I'm James Arden. My question got answered thanks to Alderman Height. I had someone had me come up here and ask, "How much are they going to pay franchise tax to do this?" Wasn't my question, somebody else in the audience.
I can't answer that, I'm sure there would be if they did. All right, thank you very much. The public hearing is recessed until next council meeting. I think we're now ready to go to whole business.
Resolution oh three twenty, Mayor Hayes.
Hold it.
Ordinance oh three twelve, Mayor Hayes.
Hold it.
Ordinance oh three nineteen, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance adopted in Arkansas by Prevention Code two thousand and two edition. This is the third and final reading.
Do we have copies of that?
Yeah.
Have we got any copies?
Actually.
How about coming up the microphone?
Mayor, if, Mayor, if you don't mind, Alderman, these are on file at the city clerk's office. They're about, about that big in volume.
When we first considered this ordinance, we did not have them, so.
They were forthcoming that time, there was one copy there, but there are sufficient number of copies there now, but they're so massive, it's, it would kill several trees to provide everybody a copy.
We don't like to kill trees, but we do like to answer questions. You want to comment on this, Chief, just briefly before?
Mayor, the fire marshal's here, he's more in tune with these codes than I am and I'd like for him to speak on this.
All right. Just be real brief, Bill, and then, then, then see if we have any questions, just kind of give us a paragraph.
Be very brief. My name's Bill Rhodes. I'm the fire marshal for the city of North Little Rock. I spent a practice in all years previously, every three to five years, the fire prevention codes are updated to meet all the newer, more modern types of building and materials and all that. This year, we are replacing it also with the International Building Code because the state of Arkansas has adopted that code. And so it will also change us from the Southern Building Code to the Universal Code, which the whole United States is in the process of going to.
Any comments or questions?
Can you answer my question?
All right. Is there a motion? You read it, hadn't you, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Third and final, is there a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion made, second and any further discussion? On the motion, Ms. Whitby.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson? Yes. Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance oh three twenty-six, Alderman Height.
We're going to hold that one. Please.
Ordinance oh three twenty-eight, Mayor Hayes.
Please read it.
This is an ordinance authorized the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with the Fallacy County Regional Solid Waste Management District and Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for residential recycling, curbside pickup services. This is the second reading.
I'll hold it now. Next item.
Ordinance oh three twenty-nine, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for storage of contractor's equipment in C-three zone for certain real property located at forty-two ten East Broadway, the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading is amended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
I believe we got a couple amendments, I think, that, that are not on my copy that we discussed last meeting.
Okay, motion made, second, now we're in discussion. You have something, Alderman Berry?
Is this, is this the amendment form?
I haven't seen an amendment.
Is this the amended form?
No, no, we're in discussion.
No. The items we discussed, and I'm going to go to page two, is that the entrance would be from Earl Street, not from East Broadway. Second, and they agreed, he agreed for plantings and a fence to be erected across the front of the property, dedicated ten-foot setback for future widening of East Broadway, and that visible equipment, that equipment that is stored within there, visible equipment, would be stored in an orderly manner. These are basically the same regulations that we put on BNS rental in Park Hill when they, when they did that one. And these are items that we discussed and they were not put into an amendment form at last meeting, they were simply discussed. He agreed to do those, but they were never stuck in there and I'm, would offer those as amendments D, E, F, and G. Page two.
Motion made, second, is, is that sound like where you want to do it, how you want to do that, Paul?
If he could repeat them again, but yes, that's correct.
Entrance, the, Mr. Humm agreed that his entrance would be from Earl Street, not from East Broadway.
Where is this going? I mean, help me out how we're admitting it and where it's going to be and?
Well.
Do you have it, Ms. Whitby? Okay, so this was amended at last?
I don't have that, see. It's not in a piece of?
Here, show Alderman Gibson's.
See, it's not in this piece of legislation that we have, so let's see what the amended form is. Okay, right here. Okay, dedication of ten-foot right away along East Broadway, payment to the city of city storm management by five thousand dollars. Eight-foot fence up in item C, so that would be, that item B would be an eight-foot privacy fence. So that leaves us down, we didn't amend it, didn't amend it to say that the entrance would be from Earl Street, even though we discussed it. We didn't amend it to say plantings and fence erected across front of property and visible equipment to be stored in an orderly manner because I was some concerned about the stacking of construction trailers. And so those are the three additional amendments that I would like to add.
Mr. Suskey, why don't you help us and tell us where you, you know, so Ms. Whitby can get these, you know, and if we need to wait a second to go on to another item and come back to it, or, you know, why don't we just?
Do you want to do that, Mayor? Give me a second to make some?
Uh, Mr. Boils, Mr. Gibson's not real specific on his plantings and I want to be, so what do you suggest?
They agreed to, well, we put requirements of the screening ordinance, it was ginkgo trees along the south.
All right, yeah, that was in existing. We're talking about screening in, behind or in front of the fence.
If, if he was talking about putting a decorative fence along East Broadway.
Correct, he was going to put a?
So if you're going to do that, is that a decorative fence and then with plantings?
And that was the redbud trees. We had a plan for y'all.
We've got, I'll tell you what, why don't, we've got about four, coming up, four resolutions that, that are condemnation that ought to be able to run through while y'all work on this. Can I just suggest that, Alderman Thomas, with your permission, that we hold this for a moment or two and see if we can work up some amendments so we can address this tonight? And while we do that, go on to the following resolution.
The first item of new business is resolution oh three thirty-seven, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the donation of certain land commonly known as the Southern Cotton Oil Property from the Archer Daniels Midland Company upon certain conditions.
Move for a second.
All right. In section two, providing with the funds necessary, necessary to remove certain construction of property. That's just going to be certain or certain of the, of the section.
Tell, tell me what you meant for that now.
About all the buildings are going to come down.
I know that.
And they're going to, they're going to give us some money to cover the cost of destruction.
They're going to give us some money to cover the cost to tear down the ones?
That we don't want.
That we don't want, but there's certain buildings out there that are, is in a, that are, that are worth it, short-term basis, but I don't, I think that Mr. Suskey was going to have that word in there that they weren't going to, they weren't going to give us the money to tear down every building.
We delete before the? Wait a minute, Alderman Thomas has got it.
So, so they're giving us the ground and they're also giving us some money to tie, to tear certain buildings down?
Correct.
That's fine.
Correct. Okay, what's your amendment again? Have you got that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion made, seconded on the amendment. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Now, motion to adopt is amended?
I'll make a motion to adopt is amended.
Second. Any further discussion?
No, I just, I'm just sorry if we took out that word "the" and inserted "certain" on that amendment.
Certain of.
Certain of the?
Of the.
On the motion to adopt is amended?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh three thirty-nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at nine-two-nine Healy Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Now, motion, uh, public hearing, convene a public hearing on two-sixteen East Sixteenth Street, that's two-sixteen East Sixteenth Street. Anyone here that'd like to comment on the condemnation of that piece of property? Not hearing any, is, did I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made, seconded on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution oh three thirty-nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at nine-two-nine Healy Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing on nine-two-nine Healy Street. If you want to comment on that, the microphone's open.
Good afternoon, I'm Bridget Jackson and that is my residence on nine-two-nine Healy. It was destroyed by fire on November the eighteenth and I've heard from my insurance company, which I had to end up, I've received some money from the insurance company. They paid out the home and on January the twenty-first, I had to wait thirty to forty-five days for them to send me some money, which I did receive a couple of, couple of thousands for. Right now, I'm in the process of, I had someone wanting to purchase the home, burnt and all, with the property, but the North Little Rock Community Development Office has a lien on the home, which I'm in the process now of trying to get in contact with them. Well, I went down to the title company last week and I'm in the process right now of trying to get an appraiser out there to appraise my property so that I can pay out this lien that the North Little, well, I'm trying to see if the North Little Rock Community, if the lien still stands because the agreement with the North Little Rock Community Development Office was they fixed some sewer work for me and I was supposed to stay in the home three years is the reason I signed the lien. But I'm trying to get in contact with them to see, you know, since it wasn't my fault and it was destroyed by fire, am I still going to have to pay the lien off before I can get it appraised and sell the property? So, that's where.
The lady that, that's obviously, you'll need to talk to, Ms. Bowman, Mr. Gray, I mean, uh, not Mr. Grace, Mr. Sykes, you want to tell me whether you had a chance to visit with this lady? What was your name again? I'm sorry.
My name is, my name is Bridget Jackson.
Jackson.
Like she said, the fire occurred in November of oh-two and the last time we talked to her was January the seventh, saying that she was waiting for insurance. You sent your letter February the twenty-eighth.
Ms. Jackson, did you receive my letter?
I believe I did, sir, but I'm an addict alcoholic and I have, I have been in treatment, sir, and I just got out of treatment a week ago, so right now, I'm trying to pick up the pieces to find out where I stand with the Community Development Office and to see if I can hire a demolition company to get it tore down.
Ms. Jackson, one of the things I used to do before I started sending out my letter was somebody would come up to the council and I would defer action on that and that was the purpose of the letter, which asked you to contact my office as, as soon as you could prior to the council meeting. I don't know what the wish the council is, but I'm afraid that, you know, the subject of, of the council action, that we really need to go forward on that. You've got neighbors that live around that property that have been there since it burned in November. Apparently you have gotten some insurance money.
Yes, sir.
And the house is still really a hazard for those that live around it. So I, I, I can't answer your question, Ms. Bowman. This lady right here can, can, can talk to you about the validity of that lien, but I'm afraid that, you know, absent something happening with the council, I'm going to ask the council to go forward.
Mayor, if she's actually really working on it, I'd like to give her another two weeks or so to see what could be worked out and I'll be glad to work with her and Community Development, see what she could do.
Your motion?
I'd like a motion that we delay it for the two weeks.
Mr. Sykes, come here and tell me what, what kind of process does that one entail, if any?
That just puts the neighborhood in jeopardy. I mean, they, they're constantly complaining, which they have a legitimate right. I mean, this house, if you've seen the photos, it's, it's totally gutted. And she's made no contact with us or any attempts to try to get something worked out. I don't know why two weeks would help.
What can we expect in two weeks? What can we expect to happen in two weeks?
Jackson, you got a council member that's asking questions?
Well, I'm going to try to get in contact with the Community Development Office and see if I still have to pay the lien on the house and if not, I'm going to try to hire a demolition company and go ahead and get it tore down.
So if, if, if you could arrange for, to take care of your lien, I mean, can, we expect you to take care of that in two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Financially?
Yes, sir.
All this does, it gives her, and she has thirty days to take it down and that, and, you know, I don't see any reason why, if she can clear up all that in two weeks, if she could, if within thirty days, if she has cleared up the lien and hired her demolition contractor, we're obviously not going to move forward.
Mr. Sykes, I'm sure that's correct, that we can't act for thirty days after tonight's action or we don't act for thirty days at least. Ms. Jackson, let me tell you, assuming that the council may or may not act tonight, you have thirty days before anything, any actions taken by the city, which means that if you wanted to tear that down, you could find out with Ms. Bowman whether or not that lien is, is valid and then you have even an additional two weeks before the city can take any action. So I just want to make sure you do that depending on what action the council takes. But even if we vote to condemn your house tonight, you do have, still have thirty days.
Mayor, let me ask a question, please. Eight or nine months ago, we went through some of this and I'm sorry, I don't remember all the details. It seems like somewhere along the way, there is a deposit required for folks to keep them,
okay, that's on rehab only. Okay, all right. Thank you. I knew you'd know, Ms. Shear.
Is there a motion?
Do you for adoption resolution?
Second. Any discussion?
But I just might say, I, I know pretty well the area, but I haven't had a single call in, uh, opposing it or of a, of a problem with it, so the only reason I was going to vote against it.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Five to two.
Ms. Jackson, it was adopted, but you have at least 30 days, uh, and if, and I'm going to ask Mr. Sykes that if you're making progress toward having it demolished on your own, you know, that we work with you on that. So, you know, see Mr. Sykes back there, you know, you've got a minimum of 30 days and if you're making some progress to do something, then I'm going to ask that he work with you before the city takes any steps and adds another lien that we all, in all likelihood, wouldn't be able to collect. But we do need to move in that direction toward trying to resolve that hazard for your neighbors, but we sure want to work with you if, if you want to work with us. Thank you very much. Next item?
Resolution 0340, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 2001 Maple Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Public hearing on 5220 Nanette Street, I open that public hearing. Anyone here that wants to comment on 5220 Nanette Street? Going once, going twice, that public hearing's adjourned, do I have a motion?
Second.
Uh, discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Six to one.
Motion to adopt?
Yes.
Second. On the motion? Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Six to one.
Motion to adopt?
Yes.
Second. Discussion on the motion? Alderman Thompson says?
My name is Richard Cole.
My name is Joe Ginn.
And we purchased the property on Maple Street last Friday with the idea of rehabbing it and selling it. And we examined the property, had the code officers come over and look at it and they've indicated that, thought it was perfectly capable being rehabbed.
Sykes?
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that we've inspected it. Mr. Ginn is a licensed electrician and the damage is not nearly as extensive, it's mostly smoke damage, replacing carpets, there's one room, only one room was there any fire in and we have, in the last few weeks, since they accepted our real estate office, altered, cleaned off all the burned siding and cleaned up completely inside and are really quite ready to, to proceed with.
Well, we, we like that, but Mr. Sykes, come here and talk to us.
Yeah, the house can be repaired, the urgency on this is it's directly across the street from school. We didn't want to waste any time, it burned on December the 17th and then December the 23rd, a real estate sign showed up. So, I mean, if.
How about your timing on your rehabilitation?
We hope to have it done within a month, possibly before the next meeting here. We've already, because it is, the neighborhood it is, then we mowed the grass, we've already cleaned up the yard, gotten all the debris out of there and like I say, we've taken the burned siding off the house, hope to have it back on with outside of it, looks, looks good next week.
Sykes, have you seen it?
I drove by there today, they have done some work, uh, one side, the wall is missing where they have taken the, the burned portion off and they have put some felt up like they're going to put siding on.
I'd like to hold this one there for two weeks.
Uh, you, you, uh, we're going, we're going to hold it for two weeks.
Your legislation, I can't ask.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'm sure Alderman Yilding and I, who filed the legislation, will hold it for two weeks. I'm going to ask Mr. Sykes to report back, uh, and let's see how much progress we've made. We sure like people living in houses and so we don't have any desire to tear it down if y'all want to rehab it and, and try to utilize it for, for somebody to live in. So, make some progress in the next two weeks and, uh, and Mr. Sykes will let us know if he, if he tells, you know, if you can get him to be willing to say that, that he's comfortable with us withdrawing this, then y'all don't even need to come down here. Uh, we'll let him carry the, you know, if you can convince him, you've made enough progress that he's comfortable in telling us that, uh, to ask me to withdraw it, we'll withdraw it next time, you don't even need to come back.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank y'all very much, we'll hold it. Uh, next item?
Resolution 0342, Alderman Barry?
Yes, uh, could you read it, please, in entirety?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution commending members of the United States Armed Forces for their service relating to the war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom, acknowledging the sacrifices made by our armed service members and their families. Whereas with the war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom, members of our armed services, both active and reserved, have been called upon to serve their country that requires sacrifices of not only the service members but their families. And whereas, the city of North Little Rock has had a long history closely associated with United States military due to its close proximity to Fort Roots, Camp Robinson, Camp Pike, and the Little Rock Air Force Base. And whereas, many North Little Rock citizens, including city employees, have been called to serve due to the war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom. And whereas, the city council finds that members of the United States military and their families should be commended for their service and sacrifices made relating to the war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, Section 1, that the North Little Rock City Council hereby commends members of the armed services and their families for the sacrifices they have made, both at home and abroad, while serving in the United States military during the war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I'd like to commend Alderman Barry for, for this resolution, uh, I think that, that, you know, the debt we owe is, as I've mentioned in the, in the opening prayer, is one that will be hard to, to ever repay and, and the second thing is that, you know, that I know those of us here in local government are going to work real hard to make sure that the local war on terrorism is, is equally as successful as, as what's going on overseas. With that, uh.
Just one question. Yes, I think this is a great resolution and a great piece of, uh, legislation that we've, uh, adopted, but also at the same time, they're still there. When they come back, I want to make sure that, that we do something to, uh, to recognize their efforts when they return.
We, uh, will work with, uh, with those in the military, uh, as you saw, there are three, three or four different, uh, facilities that we have contact with, but when it comes to the National Guard, there are a variety of units all across the state that'll be coming back, so we'll try to do what we can to, to let them know in a more visible way and, and in an appropriate way how we appreciate what they've done. Thanks for the comment. Next item?
Resolution 0343, Alderman Gibson?
Call it, please.
A resolution authorizing a change order for the city's contract for the rehabilitation of the historic Argenta Fire Station.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Six to one.
Uh, let's see if we, are we ready for that, Alderman Thompson says?
Okay, Mayor, my recommended amendment, as Mr. Gibson stated, uh, last council meeting, we created in Section 2 a D and E, that was the right-of-way in the stormwater detention fee. So, my recommendation is insert, uh, in Section 2, an F, G, and H. F would state entrance to the property shall be from Earl Street. G, plannings and fencing shall be erected across the front of the property. An H, visible equipment shall be stored in an orderly manner.
Is that your motion, Alderman Gibson?
My motion.
Is there a second?
There is.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Six to one.
Uh, let's see if we, are we ready for that, Alderman Thompson says?
Okay, Mayor, my recommended amendment, as Mr. Gibson stated, uh, last council meeting, we created in Section 2 a D and E, that was the right-of-way in the stormwater detention fee. So, my recommendation is insert, uh, in Section 2, an F, G, and H. F would state entrance to the property shall be from Earl Street. G, plannings and fencing shall be erected across the front of the property. An H, visible equipment shall be stored in an orderly manner.
Is that your motion, Alderman Gibson?
My motion.
Is there a second?
There is.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, uh, that, uh, that the attachment be referenced as supplemental attachment A. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson, excuse me, Alderman Robinson.
Counselor.
Counselor.
One of the things that I want to say is that on the last time, I voted against this measure, uh, but I've gotten numerous phone calls from neighbors that live in Rose and Gary that are for this and they believe in their hearts that he's going to do what he says that he's going to do. They say they will be watching, but that he's going to fix it up and then it's going to look nice. So, I've got numerous calls in support of Tom's hardware and I respect the wishes of the people that live in that area.
We like Tom's hardware too and we also agree with our city attorney in this amendment that we'll work with them and, uh, and ensure that, you know, that we're, we're all proud of, of the continuation of that business. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
There is an emergency clause, Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Go to ordinances?
Next item is ordinance 0330, Alderman Gibson and Yilding?
Call it.
This is an ordinance authorizing extension to the sidewalk construction contract to allow synergy to implement the 2003 sidewalk program, first reading.
Now, make a motion to suspend rules and place it on the second reading.
I'll second that.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Go to ordinances?
Next item is ordinance 0330, Alderman Gibson and Yilding?
Call it.
This is an ordinance authorizing extension to the sidewalk construction contract to allow synergy to implement the 2003 sidewalk program, second reading.
Make a motion to suspend rules, place it on the third reading.
I'll second that.
Uh, this is going, going to motion to suspend rules.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing extension to the sidewalk construction contract to allow
synergy to implement the 2003 sidewalk program, third reading.
Alderman Robinson?
Uh, once again, uh, I've gotten phone calls regarding our sidewalk program and the, placing it out on bid and I don't really know what our policy is, I don't know if there's a, an option for renewal on bids or what, or if it's a contract, but what I feel like, if this is something that needs to go out on bid, to be fair to the contractor, you might need, I would prefer to go out on.
The, uh, you know, of course, this, uh, this item, I vetoed after it was adopted last council meeting, you know, I am extremely pleased with the contractor, uh, who's gone above and beyond the call, uh, we've utilized his services for two years, perhaps three, uh, and, uh, and, and while I feel like we've got a good price, uh, I know there has one, uh, there's been one, uh, perhaps more that expressed an interest and, uh, and, and I feel like it's my responsibility to come down on the side of the, the bidding process and, uh, and, and I neglected to do that when that was being discussed and adopted company, the gas company, and a sidewalk project. Traffic's moving smooth up there because they understand the process and they understand how to work with, with the traffic that we have. No, none of these contractors are perfect. Uh, we, we, we've used a contractor downtown on a continuous project and he's done a good job. And I hope that the person who did the work downtown gets it the next half. And I wish that he would do it when we start doing the next phase of streetscape, that he would do it for the same price he did the last one. But that may not be feasible. Uh, I prefer to, if we have contractors that we're working with, obviously it's, it's a will of the council. The council has the right to, uh, waive formal bidding. If we've got a contractor that is working and doing a job, we have a tremendous sidewalk program. We got, uh, in place, I don't know, Mayor, I guess in, in three years, we probably built two million dollar for the sidewalks between, uh, the mayor's sidewalk program and the individual ward sidewalk programs. And they've been done by various amount of contractors. And I can tell you that, uh, we have, we had, we have had some very much nightmare, nightmares. Uh, I don't have to tell you about a nightmare project. You can look at me and smile, but I know how long it took you to get one finished. Look how long it took us to do Ridge Road. I, I didn't think that, that entire project was ever gonna end up there. And the H Street part of it, the Ridge Road was rather simple. So, you don't let go of a supplier who does a good job for you and contingent, continues to do it at the same price over amount of time. And I don't think we should make a change here.
Let me make a couple of observations. First of all, uh, we're not waiving competitive bidding. There was competitive bidding for this contract. It was just two years ago that, that the competitive bidding took place. Uh, you know, the second thing is, is that, you know, that this is a philosophical decision. I've, uh, made my actions known and I certainly am willing to accept the will of the council, whatever its decision might have to be. And I wanna make one other point, too. I vetoed this last time because I, I did not do my job. Now that I've done my job, I wanna make sure the council knows I do not intend to veto this. The second time shouldn't be adopted. Alderman Thompson?
Now, since you vetoed, what have you done toward taking bids on this contract?
I've told Mr. Smith to hold off, uh, in, in publishing the list pending, uh, any potential action by the council. And I, we're ready to go, uh, if the council doesn't adopt this tonight, then we're ready to publish, uh, bidding. I have told, uh, the current contractor, there are several projects that are, you know, I didn't want to delay the construction season. So there's several projects that were needing to get started and I went ahead and told them to start on a few projects that, that are being worked on now. Just a second, is that?
And, and the reason we don't wanna bid it is, uh, we think it'll cost us more money?
This is a policy decision by the council. It's my position and it needs to be rebid. And that's the reason I, I vetoed it and, and that's my position.
All right.
But I'll accept the decision of the council, Alderman Thompson.
We've got more than one sidewalk contractor in the city of North Little Rock.
We've had one sidewalk contractor.
Presently, we only have the one. Is that correct?
No, there are ward projects going on that have, uh, we, we are just finishing a project over on Sherwood Street that wasn't done by this contractor. You've got CDBG projects going on, you have ward projects going on. The, the, the project between G and H on JFK is going on. It's not done by this contractor.
Okay, this particular contractor is gonna be doing projects?
We're doing the two double oh three sidewalk program that the mayor distributed and we adopted a month or so ago.
All right. And he's gonna do it at the two thousand and one?
Price.
Price. All right. Are we positively certain that if we were to put those out on bids, that no one is gonna beat him?
No.
We don't know that for a fact, do we?
No, I, I, I have no clue. I just know what the other sidewalk contracts are being led for.
In addition to this contractor in our own city? And they're running ten percent or?
At least ten percent.
At least ten percent or more.
Alderman Yielding?
Well, they're running more than that. I'll give you some figures if you want some figures. I mean, yeah, it will be higher. There's no doubt in my mind. A lot of this, a lot of this construction has to do with the price of gasoline. So what was the price of gasoline two years ago and what's the price of gasoline today? Do you know what it is?
It's going down right now.
Well, I'll tell you what, it's not down, it's, it's not gonna, it's not under a dollar a gallon, it's not ninety-eight cents.
It's terrible.
And, all right, uh, three dollars a square foot is what the price that we get that's two years old of, for a sidewalk. Uh, BB just bid, just had a bid two weeks ago. Three fifty a square foot was what the, was the low bid. Three fifty a square foot. Uh, basing, you know, using that, we have about eighty thousand dollars more. So, you know, what eighty thousand dollars do you wanna cut out of this current sidewalk program? Uh, I certainly don't wanna cut out any of my, in my ward. You know, I've got, I've got people who are in wheelchairs that would like to have a sidewalk to be able to get out and go up the street. That's gonna be building this plan. I don't want it cut back. Uh, I'm pretty, uh, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, I'll lay it out there, it's gonna be more. If we rebid this, we will pay more money. Uh, we also had a bid that we did with our ward money down in East Gate where we put in some sidewalks down there. The bid came out per square foot, three dollars and sixty-nine cents a square foot. Uh, now, I mean, it, it was more money. Uh, why did we, why did we do that? Cause we wanted it done now because those people need the sidewalks, they're in the mud, uh, you know, that's where the rehabilitation program that's down there with the, with the mothers and their babies and we wanted to get them out. So we got another contractor, we, we bid it, we had a separate contractor bid it, we had five good bids and that was the low bid. Uh, we went ahead and did it because it needs to be done. We're not, we're not gonna wait. Uh, this is based on the two things, uh, as Alderman Gibson said, uh, the money, we're gonna pay more money, we'll be cutting out of the plan that we have now, and the fact that we do have a good contractor and you very, you know, I won't say very rarely, but you know, a lot of times you always hear the old joke, you know, well, that was the low bidder, so that's why it's that way. Well, here's a, here's a low bidder from two years ago, uh, who does a good job and who has a good price and is gonna give you a price that's two years old. Uh, you know, I'm sure a lot of people would like to get a two-year-old price on a lot of things. I certainly would. Uh, and I just think it's the right thing to do and, uh, it's perfectly, you know, we do it a lot, like Martin said, uh, uh, tree trimming, uh, when's the last time you saw the wrecker deal come up? Uh, as long as people are gonna do it for the same amount, if we think it's good, then we can do it. And I, and I think this is a good price.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they bid the same price?
Well, they couldn't bid the same price because they have a contract and, as the contractor said, he has a contract with the, uh?
Concrete.
Concrete company for, for as long as he has a contract, a current contract with the city of North Little Rock, he gets a certain concrete price. When he ceases to have that contract, then he's gonna be out there on the market like everybody else where he's paying less than fifty dollars a cubic yard, he's gonna be paying, you know, seventy is what it's going for right now. So you can pretty much figure out that we're gonna have higher prices. And that's the reason, that's the reason, that's the reason he's been able to keep his price the way it is. But then again, there's probably other factors, but that's his business. He's saying he can keep it at the same price that's two years old. And I think that's a good way to spend the public's money to get the most we can out of it. And I don't wanna cut anything out of what we're fixing to do.
Any further discussion? Let's get another motion.
I make a motion, we adopt.
On the motion, Ms. Whitby, on third and final.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel? I mean, I'm sorry, Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Five to two. It's emergency clause, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
No matter.
You need six for the emergency clause, aren't you, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
I'll vote for the emergency clause.
Okay. Next item is ordinance O three thirty-one. Alderwoman Robinson?
This is an ordinance allowing special use for daycare in R three zone for certain real property located at fourteen twenty-one West Nineteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading. Move that we suspend the rules and place it on, uh, second reading.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing special use for daycare in R three zone for certain real property located at fourteen twenty-one West Nineteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading. I move that we suspend the rules and place it on third.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing special use for daycare in R three zone for certain real property located at fourteen twenty-one West Nineteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there an emergency?
That's what you just voted on.
Mayor?
All right.
Mr. Voels, I, uh, thank you for putting this last requirement in all of these now where that they know they have to get their documentation from the state before they can get a business license, uh, to operate. And we need to, that's been one of the biggest problems we've had. They, as of tonight, they said, well, we're all ready to go and we go open up and they don't have any of the, they don't have their fences up, they don't have all the other things and?
Yes. And we've met with the H S and they're trying to work with us.
Okay.
Any other comments, any council members, Alderman, Thomas?
Uh, I guess the one question I wanted to ask, I know some employees have mentioned to me and I, and I was, I couldn't answer. I think a couple of years ago, we did a study, we spent about sixty thousand dollars to do a study of every employee we had. In fact, each alderman, I think, was, had to try to participate in that. And some of our employees, longtime employees, are, are still very much, I think, underpaid other, other cities, some of them in your fifteen, eighteen years. Uh, have we done anything or have we just let that study go or did we ever, are we ever gonna do anything about that?
Well, Alderman, right now, I think the act of the economy has, uh, has radically affected cities all across this country and certainly in, and this community's no exception. Our budget's been relatively flat for the last two, perhaps three years. Uh, so our desires have not been able to match, uh, you know, our purse. And, uh, and, and I think the opportunity for us to give a three percent raise were those that might otherwise not be in line for stepping gray was perhaps as much, if not more, than communities across the state. So the answer to that question is, you know, we don't have the ability, even though we may have the desire.
Okay.
As I see it.
Because, as I remember, I, I think I voted against this study because I've, over the years, being on the council, I, I feel like those studies are pretty useless. We don't really use them, we use that as kind of a delaying tactic. So I'd have much rather seen the people, the employees getting, got that than put into a study. And so that's the reason it, uh, that I brought that up because I know there's a number of them. They, they see us on the council voting five hundred thousand, but it's three hundred thousand for that. And they wonder, you know, how we come up with that money without, uh, giving consideration to the study that was done by professional people.
Well, we did give consideration to that study, Alderman. And when I asked that that be done, I fully intended to do everything we could to try to reflect the responses that that study took place. Obviously, you know, when that study took place, we were off of sales tax election. Uh, we had perhaps some ability. Uh, we hadn't entered into a recession, uh, like now that's been extended for going on the third year. So, you know, uh, all I can tell you is, you know, I certainly wouldn't have recommended us doing that study as simply a delaying tactic. So I completely take issue with that statement. You know, the second thing is, is that that's one-time money. Anytime, as you are well aware, Alderman, anytime we do raises, you know, we, those are our annual contribution, not annual contributions. We don't intend to let, let our folks go. So what we do one year is expected every year plus whatever raise that we're able to try to achieve, you know, for the subsequent year. And, and I can say in the fifteen years now that I've been here, I think there was one year that we didn't give a raise and we went back and, uh, and, and took care of part of that year. So I'm very proud of, of our record, uh, and I would match this community up to just about any one in the state in terms of, of what we've been able to do. Ms. Robinson, Alderman, Alderman, Alder, Councilwoman Robinson?
That's okay. Um, I've been receiving phone calls from people that live, uh, in the area of East Eleventh Street, uh, in Beach. There's a warehouse, an abandoned warehouse, and they're saying that they have a problem with rats crossing the street, coming over into, um, their, their home. And they have contacted the city, but the city has told them that there's nothing to be done.
You know who they contacted?
I'm not sure if they contacted code or if they contacted the health department. I'm not sure.
Well, it could be animal control, too.
But rats.
Well, if you could help me find out who they contacted, then maybe we can try to see what, what opportunities we can bring some efforts to bear that will be responsive. And rest assured, it's our desire to help out.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, rats are animals.
Okay.
Uh, any other council member?
Yep.
The microphone's open?
Take a shotgun down there.
We had y'all come up there and survey and check out to put us a sidewalk from one end of the scenic drive to the other to keep the kids and walkers out of the street up there out in high traffic. Gary went down and looked here a while back to see when it was gonna start and come to find out, everything disappeared. Nobody knows anything about it. So I wondered if we could take about half of Martin's sidewalk project over there in that first ward and get up there and put some of ours in.
We can do whatever this council wants to do.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it. I have a motion. Uh, Mr. Mcatee?
Oh, you know it, don't.
I do. I asked, I asked somebody if we had seen you recently, cause I was worried about you.
Oh, yeah, do come by my house.
Well, I was wondering if you're still living there.
Jerry Mcaway is my name.
Huh?
What I'm down here for, I will speak of behalf of?
Mcaway, I'm sorry, I said Mcatee.
Now, you, you know my name.
You bet I do.
Uh, I will speak of behalf of Harms Hardware. Harms Hardware, when I was about six, seven years old, my daddy used to bring cotton from Crystal Hill to Rose City Gin. Harms Hardware had a little old store on Washington Avenue at that time. And everything we used to tie our mules in the back of the, of the hardware store, right now, everybody in the country would tie, bring their wagon to town, we'd tie our mules like that. Old man Harms had hay and everything, we could feed our mules, water them and everything. I ain't never know nothing bad about Harms Hardware. Everything I know about him has been good. And I was nothing but a kid. I'm going on eighty now. And, uh, please, don't y'all run Harms, Harms Hardware out of town. These youngsters, they wanna pull up a fence, they ain't gonna just throw up something. They gonna put everything they put up, they gonna be nice.
We'll see.
They gonna have everything in rotation. If you don't think they have everything in rotation, go buy their store now. They run the store, they run all their line up in rotation, keeps it locked clean. It's, it's just really nice. And, uh, I've been dealing with Harms for many years. And y'all be nice to Harms.
We, we are, Mr. Mcaway, you're preaching to the choir. The council, uh, went ahead tonight and, uh, and, and sort of reversed itself and, uh, and, and we, we, we told, we told Harms if they'd do a few things, which they agreed to do.
They gonna do it, whatever you tell them to do.
When we believe.
They'll do it. I stand behind them.
Uh, and we know they'll do it then.
That's right. So.
We got them all approved.
I've been knowing them youngsters before, at least I know them, know their daddy when they were little bitty boys. Their grandfather, the one, had the store, their great-great-grandfather. We used to tie our mules out behind the store, feed them hay, get water. Back then, the hardware store didn't have nothing but hay, uh, ax to cut wood, saw to cut wood, just little ends and odds back then. You didn't have to have a lock when I was a kid. All you had to do is to take a bowie, uh, maybe about eight inches long and drive a nail in the middle of it, just turn it to keep the wind from blowing your door. So things have changed since then.
Well, the only, the only thing, Mr. Mcaway, since we saw you last time, is I see a little gray up there that I didn't see.
It ain't too much, is it?
Not too much.
I'm ju, I'm yet just as sweet as a peach.
I know it. The only difference is, is that me and you still have some, like Alderman Gibson doesn't have nearly as much as he has.
All of his, the young girls have licked all of his hair out. Me and you, me and you are not sweet enough.
Well, I hope my wife is not watching.
All right, I thank y'all.
Y'all make sure to try to fix Harms Hardware up. Don't run them out of town. They've been here longer than anybody in this town.
They're okay, they're gonna stay.
They good, too.
You bet.
I hope you keep them.
You told me it was coming tonight and that's good. I'm not sure.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Ain't no way I can top that. He's got probably several more years on me, but I do remember when Harms Hardware Store was on Washington Avenue in North Little Rock, before they ever come to Rose City. I even knew their dad.
I even knew their dad. And, uh, all of them have been good, upstanding people, help you any way they can. And I appreciate what y'all done for them because they are, uh, a family to Rose City and they've done everything that they said they would do, all of them. It's just a family, they've got outside family. But, uh, I wanna, uh, address this to Ms. Robinson, uh, on account of the people that she said was gonna, that had called her and I know, cause I mean, I don't have to know who they are, I don't care, uh, that was gonna watch them. But I would like to personally invite you, anytime that you want to, just to come to my shop and I'll take you down Broadway and I'm gonna show you some places. This got cars, it's got fenders off of them, it's got doors off of them, it's got motors out of them. It's sitting right up next to Broadway. Now, you talk about a hazard. I will personally invite you anytime that you want to and maybe some of these projects, you might be able to help us with. And the next thing that I have, and I hope this is the last time that I, that I say anything about beer and burns party. Now, I don't know how many people has come to me and asked me to say something to y'all about this, cause I know this is done, uh, a done deal for thi, for this year. And I know it's only a three-day, uh, process, but it's gonna be probably, I don't know whether y'all ever been to interstate or not, it's probably gonna be somewhere between 110 and 135 teams. You count that 15 ball players per team, that's not counting the, the player, the players, kinfolk, the kids and stuff like that. But, uh, I was told the big beer, uh, banner was took down Sunday. It was gone Sunday. But some of the people asked me what the, the people, this is strictly the ones that voted and caused this to go in out there or allowed it to happen. They asked me what y'all was thinking about and I said, well, probably that's the problem. You probably wasn't thinking. That was the whole problem right there. Because if you had have been, y'all don't realize that our police department has, went out of their way for these kids on piles, to get these kids off of the street and to give them someplace to go when their parents is not able to take care of them and stuff. And that has been, began to be a growing thing to where they work together and play together, to where they respect each other. And, uh, uh, the Fourth of July weekend is gonna be one of the biggest weekends of the year for kids to go camping, cookouts, gather and stuff like that. And y'all don't realize how many cars is gonna be out there, uh, drinking and stuff and them little kids is gonna be wandering over that park and stuff out there. And I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. I know there's lots of, I haven't found nobody that agrees with this. And, uh, I don't know, I heard, uh, that y'all was gonna get about $8,000 out of that proceeds of that, uh, beer money. And, uh, maybe, uh, that, uh, $8,000 will help, uh, Alderman Yildin on them sidewalks. And I appreciate y'all for every time that y'all, uh, allow me to confer and speak and don't give me a thrash. Thanks.
You, you have rights to speak anytime you want, Alderman Thomas.
Uh, I wanted to say one other thing, too, in regard to that. Many of the people in the Rose City area feel that, that the temporary permit will not be given unless you request it. And they, in fact, the lady at Alcohol Beverage Control said that that would, that's the way it was done for a temporary permit, that the mayor would have to request that. So, uh, if you don't request it, they're not gonna do it.
I'm Joe Reynolds and I have, I guess, a question on ordinance, uh, that just passed concerning the sidewalk situation. This, this construction outfit, are they local or where, where are they from? They're from Sherwood? Okay. That's the reason they don't have a privilege, uh, license to do business here? Even if you do business with the city, you don't need one?
If you have, if you have a, a license and, and I would assume we reciprocity with Sherwood just like we do with Little Rock. They've got a business license in, in a city that's, that, and I'm not sure how far that stretches, uh, but I'm sure there's reciprocity. They've got one in their own city.
The county.
In the county. Fire. Just a...
Did you have something else? I was just gonna ditto what you were saying. I checked into that matter this afternoon. And we do have a reciprocity agreement with all the communities, uh, localities around us. If they, at the office of that sidewalk company is located outside of the city of North Little Rock and they pay a privilege tax in the locality they live in, then we honor that agreement here in the city of North Little Rock. And they're not required to have a separate privilege tax paid to the city of North Little Rock to do business with the city.
They're not.
They are, they are not.
Well, I was concerned about the privilege tax situation. You have a committee and it's an ongoing thing and they're still studying it. And I saw the list on some of the stuff and some of the people's privilege taxes go up, some of them go down. And I'm gonna have some questions about some of those particular companies a little bit later when it's all said and done because I don't agree with the way some of the, uh, fees have been increased and decreased and, uh, I think the committee needs to take a real hard look at, at, at some of that situation. And also I would like to echo what Brother Taylor said about the alcohol situation. I, you know, I don't have any problem with, with people that have a few drinks, but I do have a little bit of a problem having beer available in parks where there's children and stuff. And I know the junior league likes to voice their opinion about having weddings over at the new center and then they serve a little champagne, whatever. That's a different story than the parks. I'm, I'm not in favor of having alcoholic beverages in the park. Uh, you know, I think with the .08, whatever the breath thing is now, you could drink two beers and, uh, if you blow it in it, you'd be in trouble. So I don't know what the answer to the problem is, but I think there is a problem there and I think we need to better address that situation. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, gentlemen. I promised a certain gentleman sitting over at Hurry so he could go eat supper. I also agree that we shouldn't have the beer out there and I'd like for y'all to maybe come up with some, something that will put extra policemen out there that particular weekend, whether the city has to pay them, people that's furnishing the beer has to pay them, have extra protection out there because there's gonna be some happy-go-lucky's out there.